Let's call this meeting to order. I just want to remind everybody that anybody would like to speak before the commission, please fill out a blue card and submit it to the clerk. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston.
Present.
Commissioner Hobie.
Here.
Commissioner Lamy.
Present.
Vice Chair Lee. We'll go to our dabsen. Chair Blair.
Here. Thank you. Commissioner Hobie, would you please lead us in the flag of allegiance? Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment? There's a time when somebody likes to speak before the commission on an item that is not on tonight's agenda may speak at this time. If you do want to speak, you need to fill out a blue card. Do we have any blue cards tonight?
Yes, we've received one from Michael O'Connor.
Good evening. My name is Michael O'Connor and I live in Eastville, Iowa. I'm in Rowan Court, which is the Council of the Plots District. I'm not sure how you all know that, but also good to see city staff. The reason why is I wanted to talk a little bit about an issue that's been going on all over straight. A property owner that they ignore in Rowan Court has had multiple complaints about problems at that property. They go back prior to a year ago, as of like a few days ago. The city has fully addressed it with this particular property and they did it through a payment action through the court system. And the court action that they're actually more successful with was only C-104368. And the reason I'm kind of here to this panel is that one of the functions of your panel from the city code is to do public hearings on abatement issues. Now, the city code also has a section there that says the city attorney can go through any kind of legal process for that. But my thought as a resident of the city, I don't like seeing the city management issuing illegal action against a property owner without having already gone through elected or appointed members of the public for that. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention, that we actually have had a lawsuit, especially a court judge has something issued out for the city to abate. But I don't think anyone knew of that. Now, before I actually got a judge to agree to that late last week, and I didn't have the power today, I share a property right, so they were up with that, glad to say it's done. But I'm a very big believer of the process and if there are rules that are set, that are standards. And I don't know if you guys as a panel like that or think it's okay, or if you have procedures applies, maybe this is a legal abatement and so it can just go through the legal process. But I personally would prefer to have a chance to stand here, tell you about the problems in a public hearing and have you guys adjudicate that. You could go to the court to get enforcement action. So that's what I'm here to talk about and I'll watch you too. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other cards?
Well, we do not have any more.
Well, because it's not on tonight's agenda, we can't comment on it right now. But we could put it on a future agenda item if necessary. Thank you. All right, let's move on then. We will go on to, I think it's the consent calendar, the next item. Do you have any comments or corrections on the consent calendar? Or is there any additions or deletions, excuse me, item four? Any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Do we have? No? None? Okay, then move on to item five, the consent calendar. If we don't have any comments or do we have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Motion to accept.
We have a second.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston.
Aye.
Commissioner Hobie.
Aye.
Commissioner Lamy.
Aye.
Chair Blair.
Aye.
Vice Chair Housewives 40.
Thank you. Let's go on to item six, 6.1, Planning Commissioner 101, staff.
Thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. Tonight is our pleasure to introduce training by our team with Michael Baker and I believe it's Mr. Mark T. that is going to be giving the presentation and also accompanied by Bob Stark. So gentlemen, you have the floor.
You're up.
Thank you. Can I take a quick here? Whoever designed the podium wasn't thinking about paper. That's awesome right there, but being a planner, just to make it work, how's that? Okay, my name is Mark T. and I've been here before. I know many of you by name and I hope I don't bore you this evening. I do have 906 slides and I'll be reading each of them to you and the idea is planning commission training. Don't wait to the very end. If you have any questions, if something pops in your head, please just ask. This is not formal. Also, there are many ways of doing what you do and I have nothing but respect for what you do because you get yelled at a lot and sometimes you don't have any choice in the matter. So tonight we're going to talk about the roles and responsibilities. We're going to talk about what the city council gets to do, what you get to do and the role of staff in this. We're going to talk a little bit about how to run the effective meeting and how to consider items and I'll give you some tips and tricks. And kind of peel back the veil of what staff has to deal with on a regular basis to help you understand how we get before you with recommendations and how things actually happen. And then, of course, we'll talk a little bit about SEQA at the end. It's my personal passion and belief that someday that law will go away and will be actually to get things done. But I still have a house payment, so we have to keep going on. All laws, including the general plan and the ordinances, all stem from a hierarchy that begins with the U.S. Constitution. People tend to forget that, but planners, just like police officers, have to know what the constitution says and other things like property rights. Every now and then you'll see a comment before you, I don't know if we're considering this item. Well, we're considering this item because it's every citizen's right to petition their government and our ordinances and our laws allow that. Now, there are provisions within our guidelines and within all of the different things that we have to operate to tell them how that's supposed to work, but ultimately, staff can't say no at the counter and not have something come forward. And we can talk a little bit about what that means. So we have this hierarchy that looks like a, you know, elementary school textbook. These things are buffeted a little bit by court decisions because we think what the words say, the court often tells us something different and then we have to go down that path. And of course, there's public opinion because just because it's written down doesn't necessarily mean that people want to follow it that way and there's a process that we go for. But at the very bottom of that is our general plan and our zoning code. Those are the two most important documents that govern what we do as staff and what the applicants have to deal with when they come before you. So just like the people have to follow the law, planning commission has to follow the law and we have some discretion on some things, but in many things, we're bracketed by what the law says and what the city has done previously. Precedent is very important in planning and you'll hear me say this a couple of times during the evening, but we have to be able to predict with relative certainty what the commission and the council are likely to do with any given item. And the reason that is important is because it's expensive to come before you. By the time the applicant has stood before you, they've probably spent a couple of years in some cases, hundreds of thousands of dollars and they've done so on the guidance of the documents they adopted, the general plan and the zoning, and on the precedent of what the commission and council have decided on similar projects in the past. So we have to be able to tell people what's going on. Now, this slide is the county responsibility, a little bit out of order, you know, I don't know how it happened. It should be city council responsibility. There we go. City council responsibilities. That's what happens when I have a sliding podium. So the council sets the top everything, right? They get elected to make the hard decisions, they get the budget decisions, everything from personnel to paychecks to contracts, all of that goes through the city council. They set the policy area, they are the final arbiter of all ordinances. We all serve to recommend or deal with projects at their pleasure. They are the final adopting body for the general plan, the zoning, development regulations and whatnot. Sometimes they'll only get to them by appeal, but ultimately, the buck stops with them. And that's essential because that allows us to have a little more fun sometimes with planning at our end. We have the ability to do things and look at things without having to worry or have the burden of worrying about the rest of the city, different aspects of contracts for maintenance and whatnot. So our job is to, our job as staff and our job as the commission is to do what we're doing under the duly appointed policies of the council. But planning commission is established by code, comes as a shock to a lot of people that haven't had this experience, but there's no state law that requires a planning commission. And there are many communities in the state that don't have one. And I think that's a mistake on the part of the councils in those particular cities and they've done it for various reasons. Sometimes because they're so small, they can't find, you know, 13 people to actually serve. But on the other hand, sometimes it's done for other reasons that aren't so altruistic. In this particular instance, the planning commission serves a very important role in the employment division of the general plan. And the general plan really sets the guiding policies for everything that we deal with. The code specifically spells out the duties of the planning commission, one through six there, and that what you would expect, study things, advise, assist, work with to deal with planning commission or planning issues and land use. Our con of influence is really land use and how it affects the physical environment. The public commission is often the very first and only body essentially that members of the public come to meet. They deal with us at the counter in a professional courtesy way. They come in and they ask questions. We talk with them on the phone, they file their application, we work with them. But honestly, the first decision making is before you and the job of the commission is to listen to what they have to say and weigh all of the evidence, some of which we've provided, some of which they'll provide during testimony. It's incredibly difficult for normal people to come and stand before their government and ask questions. It's really hard to stand at this podium. I've done it for a long time, but some of these folks never do public speaking. It's incredibly hard. So it's really important from the commission standpoint to be welcoming, and Eastville's always been welcoming as a commission, be welcoming, encourage people to say what they think and thank them for them. It's important that in our world, perception is reality. So the perception of conflict of interest, if you ever think, talk with your staff, talk with the city attorney. We don't want any real or perceived conflicts of interest and you don't want to be accused of saying during the meeting. It simply takes away from the value of the discussion. Should focus on the big picture. One of the things that staff gets caught up in is, well, this is this project, it's at this site, we're dealing with it. We try to focus on the big picture, but we may not see everything and it's one of the benefits of having an informed and active commission. There are essentially two types of commission decisions. There's quasi judicial where you're going to pass judgment on an application and you're pretty much the end deciding factor. You'll weigh the evidence, you'll take the testimony and you'll make a decision. Those are pretty cool and they're also really prescribed by ordinance. You'll find findings for those, you'll see that we need to have substantial evidence, you'll see that we've gone through and listed all of the components of the application or the testimony that support that evidence. The second kind of application or decision to make are recommendations. These are more legislative in nature where you're making, you're passing judgment on a change to the rules. And on those, you have a lot more leeway because you're making a recommendation, you can consider a lot of things. We still have findings in most instances. Findings are simply a legal way of saying you're showing your work. We did this because. If you think of findings as the because statement, then you'd be pretty safe to go. Adoption of changes to the zoning ordinance or general plan are both examples of recommendations you would make to the council. We can also go through workshops, policy statements, all sorts of things that are actually fun to work on with the community. So this table provides a quick overview of the types of decisions that kind of fall. The directory has some decisions per the code and all of these are in the municipal code and easy to follow. And then you can see the part where your recommendations or you simply make the decisions or we recommend and the commission makes the decisions. So these are, you know, these are things that you see all the time, conditional use permits, variances, specific plans, those types of things. So staff has an interesting role. We are the go-between between the policymakers such as yourself and the council and the applicant. It's not effective to have the commission sitting in the office all day or the council will be sitting in the office all day. So staff is that role and in that regard, we wear the cloak of the agency that we're in. So that means that when we're at the counter, we're representing decisions that have been made by the commission and by the council over time. And as I mentioned previously, it's essential to the applicant that we have the ability to predict fairly certainly what the commission is going to find favorable and what the council will find favorable because they will, believe it or not, tailor most of their application materials to try to get a favorable decision. As I said, it's expensive to go through this process. If you can tailor it to make it go and it works with your project, it makes a lot of sense. But also help them and guide them through that process. Every city's a little different, every agency does things a little differently and it's important that people that come to the counter know what's going on. We prepare them for the agenda, we bring them to you, we have certain procedures that we follow. We try to make the information comprehensive but not overwhelming. And sometimes that's really a challenge. If we do an EIR, so if the EIR for the Goodman Commerce Center, when it's printed out, is about this tall and it can be really tough to get through some of that information. We try to summarize it and we try to highlight those things that we know are important to the commission when we do that. Lastly, and this is a pet peeve of mine, every staff member is paid to have an opinion and make recommendations. We'll be tied, a staff member of mine says, well, let's just let the commission figure it out. That's doing the commission a disservice. We're supposed to be the professionals to take a look at the material and say, based on what we see here and our experience, here's what we would recommend. It's a recommendation. Commission can decide to go with a recommendation or not, but ultimately, we're paid to make that recommendation to you. That's what we're here to do. And we'll talk a little bit about what happens when you disagree and what to do with that. So here's how we make our recommendations. We look at state law, we look at federal law, we look at general plan consistency, that's a big one, and that can be a little interesting at times because the general plan is warm and fuzzy in places and in other places, it's very precise. And it's up to us to try to navigate the warm and fuzzy pieces for the applicant. How do we do that? We look back to precedent. What has the commission said in the past? What have we approved in the past? What's been successful? Zoning compliance. Zone ordinances are usually a little more precise. We can say, yes, it's three feet, yes, it's seven feet, it's measurable. It's where I like to spend most of my time with the applicant. If you're consistent with this, we're usually good to go. And SEQA, Latin for delays project, it's a, it can amend the project, it can move things around generally with the goal of making the environment better as a result of it. And with some beer and pizza, we could probably discuss whether that actually happens. So all of that adds up to the meeting. And one of the things that we like to go through is to make sure that the commission understands that we're a resource. And one of the benefits you have of getting the agenda as far out as you do is the ability to call and ask questions. And we all as staff will stop what we're doing to answer a commissioner's question. It's that important. Now, this isn't to mean that you can't bring the question up at the meeting, but if you bring the question up at the meeting, we aren't prepared and if we don't know the answer, we can't give you the answer. And so then it all looks like we're working at different purposes as opposed to being on the same team. If you have something you want to bring up and you want some information that we've prepared, by all means, let us know and we can bring that information to the fore and have it for you. Bring it up to the meeting, that's certainly the point of having the meetings, but let us be prepared so that you have what you have, what you need in front of you. When we always get contentious is when we get in trouble. No, it's when the, when the chair is the most important. The chair sets the tone for the meeting and tries to ensure that we have rational decision making. It can be interesting that the commission and the parties in the audience will often take their lead from how the chair introduces the item and goes through the meeting. It's important and, you know, one of the things that I've enjoyed working with Eastville on is respectful of different opinions. Some of the commissions I've worked with can be a little more like a Jenny Spiller show than a commission where they start to banter amongst themselves rather than remembering that everybody's allowed to have a, it's time for to go south now. Everybody may have a different opinion. And it's important from the public's perspective to know that the commission's working together. Generally, we're just mad. We ask for the staff report, usually the chair will ask for the staff report or will simply pop up and give that. We go over the staff report, we try to hit the highlights. We don't read the staff report to you. We assume you've already read that, you learned to read quite a while ago. We try to hit the high points of things that have been sticking with the applicant where we'll have an issue that the applicant is concerned about or where we may have agreed to disagree. We don't always come here with all of the answers. Sometimes we agree to disagree. We'll give you the results of the environmental analysis and of course, our recommendation. And it's at that point that it's useful to ask any questions you might have. You'll have prided upon by saying, I'm going to ask you on this at the meeting, come prepared. You don't have to tell us whether you're in favor or opposed to the project. That's immaterial. Just ask us what, you know, come with this additional information or be prepared to speak on this issue, please, and we'll be there. And we'll open the public hearing. The public hearing is often the most contentious part of the meeting. It's the three minutes of fame. Anybody that remembers Andy Warhol, his famous quote, everybody gets 15 minutes of fame. Well, those were three-minute increments and when you set a timeline, one of my favorites, I was at a meeting of the city of Chico on a Walmart and they said, hold one minute comment time. And we were still there for four meetings, each of which lasted four hours. It was interesting. One, I don't even know how you can collect your thoughts and be ready to speak in one minute. It's important that the time be consistently applied, otherwise you'll start to get revolting in the room and you'll get a lot of acrimony. You can try to ask the audience not to repeat items again and I've seen that done moderately, successfully, but honestly, the best practice is it's your three minutes, do what you want with it. And smile nicely and encourage comments. I mean, some of the heartbreaking ones are when people are really passionate about something. But public speaking is really hard. It's really hard to stand here and with all of you staring at people. So be encouraging, be friendly. The consultant goes home. You have to live with these people. They're part of your community and so the more engaging you are here, the better information you're going to get out of them and find out what their concern is. I also, and I don't often put it on the slides, I would also suggest that be careful of your body language. People are staring at you the entire time that the public hearing is going on and if you're making it obvious that you shouldn't be playing poker, it can really have a negative impact on the audience. So just be careful of what your poker face looks like and make sure you're not going, this is crazy, what are you even talking about? And ask questions. Usually those people from the loop, when I engage them at the republic, they usually come up with something written, but I've seen more than one person so flustered that the commission actually cared about what they said, that they decided they weren't opposed to the project after all. And it was kind of interesting.
Excuse me, I have a question for you. You say answer or ask them questions? Should we do that after their three minutes are up or in the middle of their three minutes? Because they have three minutes and do we put a pause on the timer or?
I've seen it done both ways, Chairman. The way I like to do it is, and it's just because I'm getting old and I can't remember the question at the very end, is all, if you know, if they're talking eloquently, you can interrupt them and say, hey, I have a question about that. Otherwise, jot it down and do it afterwards. You may really have to gauge on the individual, but make sure they get their three minutes and they'll tell you about, you've been, they'll tell you about, wait a minute, as I answer that. Generally, the best practice is to wait until they're done and then ask questions, but sometimes if they're reading from a long document, that can be tough. But I like to wait to the end.
All right. Thank you.
And I think it's important to ask questions to show you're listening and if you genuinely cared or just make something up, but it shows that you've engaged with the audience and you may learn something. So I want to switch to conditions of approval and we're going to talk a little bit about the difference between conditions of approval and mitigation measures. And this is something near and dear to my heart because it can be really tempting as a commissioner to will the almighty back of the scepter and condition Apple to build the ramp to the land because they can. And we need to be very careful with that because we represent a governmental agency and our number one purpose is to be fair and equitable. And we can't look at the applicant and say, well, they can afford it, so they can build it. So I want to make sure that the condition of approval is in fact proportional to the project. It actually means something in relation to the project. We also have to make sure that they're measurable. I've seen some conditions of approval that are kind of warm and fuzzy and I honestly don't know how you'd make sure it was actually done. But if the commission's happy with it, the applicant's happy with it and it gets their approval, I think that's okay. It just becomes a problem for staff later when we don't know how to know when you're done. And it becomes rather interesting. But also, it needs to be within the ability of the city to do. I can't have a condition of approval that makes my kids clean their room. It's just not going to happen. So it's outside of our jurisdiction and it simply doesn't work. One of the things that often surprises a commission is that we don't really care who the applicant is. We don't care if it's Mother Teresa here. We're going to condition it as if it is the worst developer we've ever worked with because we don't know who the developer will be after the entitlement's done. We condition the project, not the person. And so trust everybody who read the fine print is kind of how planners function. So to get you the rough proportionality, we're going to talk a little bit about, this is your issue, that's your project, this cannot be the solution. And this is not just something staff made up, this comes from the Supreme Court of the United States and we all have to follow what comes down. There are a couple of court cases that if you're interested, you can follow, Nolan and Dolan being the most important and that's one of those where they actually dealt with the coastal commission and I didn't think anybody could rule over the coastal commission. So we turn our attention to the environmental, California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. The SEQA does not solve problems for your project. It is not where you want your solutions to come from. You do not want the EIR consultant solving your problems. It's not where it happens. It's an informational document and it's only one piece of the information before you. It requires us to report on the impacts of the project on the environment and it requires us to show how we're addressing those impacts. Most of the time, we have regulations that are already in place that deal with that. MSHCP, air quality, you name it, we have a number of, you can't put a shovel in the dirt in California without three or four agencies regulating them. We're writing about that in the environmental document. SEQA does, EIR does not kill projects. SEQA does not kill projects. You can still consider a project even if there are environmental impacts that you can't address and reduce to less than significant. The EIR allows you to do that. Lots of people will climb up on EIR mainly because they cost a little bit of money and they take some time to do, but they do not, do not kill projects. In fact, the opposite is true. An EIR is designed to figure out a way for you to solve the problems and improve the project or override the concerns and keep going. So that's something to keep in the back of your mind as we go through the environmental process. SEQA does not give us any superpowers. The city has a wide variety of powers that aren't shared by most agencies. So for example, an irrigation district or a water control district does not have the same powers that a city has. We are limited in what we can do with our powers under SEQA to all of those things under which we have jurisdiction. This is why if we're having impacts that are in another community or on a piece of state or federal property, we have the ability to mitigate that. Even if we have a mitigation measure in the document that says, here's how you solve the problem, we can't compel that solution because it's outside of our jurisdiction. We don't have the power to do that. So there are limitations to what the environmental process can do. You can write a lot of words, but at the end of the day, the decisions are up to you as opposed to the document. So mitigation measure is a modification of the project that is specific to that project. And I always tell my staff that these are laws, you're writing a lot of new laws. So before I add any laws, the libertarian part of my personality says, check to make sure if there's any laws that already cover the issue. And if there are, can we use those as opposed to writing something new? mitigation measures must always be measurable, objectively measurable, cold, precise. You must be able to independently determine that that You must be able to independently determine that that happened. Because if you can't, then how do you describe how you've gotten the authority to modify the project? If you are simply changing the project, then there's some other discretionary act. It's either the use permit, or the zoning requirement, or your legislative police powers. Don't use SEQA. Stop it. It just doesn't work. And we talked about the feasible. Also, if we don't have an impact, we can't have a mitigation measure. We have to have a significant impact to have the authority to mitigate. So that's why I see this causal relationship between significant impact, meaning it's above the threshold on the document, versus the mitigation measure designed to reduce this impact to less than significant or below that threshold. Without that, we can't have the mitigation measure. There's one asterisk I have to add to that, kind of like baseball stats. If the applicant agrees to it, and that'll happen sometimes in a meeting, you have the ability to put it in there. The applicant has to agree to it. So that happens sometimes because, public. You have a public meeting, and they say, "Well, we want a crosswalk here." And the city engineer says, "I don't think one's wanted." And the neighborhood says, "We want one." And usually, the best thing to do is defer to the city engineer, but everyone in the commission will say, "Well, if we put a crosswalk in, we'll make everybody happy. Everybody rejoices, carries the chair around on their shoulders." And I've seen that happen. This happens with stop sign lights, happens with stoplights. It's usually a bad idea, but sometimes, when everybody's in impasse, there may be no other way. So I have a sports analogy here to help you with the difference between conditions of approval and mitigation measures. And I apologize to George Carlin for this one. Conditions of approval are like a baseball game. They're warm, it's a summer evening, it's beautiful, the game can run forever. You don't have to be precise. There's errors, we can figure it out. Mitigation measures are football game. It's on a rigid gridiron. You must do certain things a certain way. There are penalties, we have to get it done. So without, without a significance determination, you can't have a mitigation measure. They must be independently measurable. Conditions of approval can be aspirational. You can sometimes get those done. So things to avoid, and I apologize because conditions, I want to sometimes add conditions of approval, and I think it's important that you know that we have to follow the federal and state guidelines on this in terms of rough proportionality between the condition and the, and the project. We need to make sure that it addresses something that's existing, not something that, or something the project is creating as opposed to something that's been around for 10 or 15 years that we just never got around to. And the last piece on this particular one is, try very hard not to surprise your staff with conditions of approval. If you have an idea for a condition of approval, pick up the phone and call us. They may have a reason why it's not a COA on your staff report. We may have already concerned in another place, it may not be feasible. At least come informed with that information that we can provide to you, because that's our job, is to help you with that. So I spoke before that we provide a recommendation. Every staff should provide a recommendation.
Excuse me, can we go back to that mitigation and conditions of approval?
Absolutely.
Just a little clarification. Say, there's a commercial, a retail development going in, and we know that there's going to be high traffic, maybe young people, students passing through. Can we, with, putting a condition that they put trash cans out, outside of their store, be a mitigation or a condition of approval?
So that depends a lot on the type of approval before you. So if it's a master or administrative approval, unless your ordinance requires the trash cans, you have to determine there's a significant environmental effect. Now, having said that, you can certainly say, "Young people, look." I know that's a generalization. I apologize to all the young people in the room. Young people, look.
Not here.
And because they have a potential flag, we think this could be an impact, we can mitigate this impact with a trash can. That's kind of using a sledgehammer to kill a mosquito. It's easier simply to put it as a condition of approval on the project. If you have the, if you, if you're going through that process, most likely, you have the police power, you have the discretion to add that as a condition of approval to the project.
So that can be added as a condition of approval?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
If you just got me in trouble with the staff, that'll be all right. Okay, so, besides that, I tend to tell them to have trash cans. So if you disagree with staff, first of all, perfectly acceptable. We're all beings, so they feel bashful about it, and, 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 please understand, we don't have little rules of each of the commissioners that we stick pins in when they disagree with us. Please let us know. It's our job to help you understand why we made the recommendation we did. We can show you our evidence, we can explain why. And after the point, when we come to the final, if you have points that you want us to raise that support your position, which may be 180 degrees from ours, we can provide that information. That is our job. It comes as a surprise to a lot of the applicants, while we spend as much time helping people in favor of the project as we do helping people that are opposed to the project. We don't just represent the applicant when they come in, we represent the citizens of the city. And some will want the project, and some don't. Both are, both have access to our time and to our, our resources. And so, we try very hard to be accessible and unbiased on this when it comes to these types of things. It's always to my good meaning, if I come to people in the hallway afterwards, even if the project didn't go their way, but they felt they were listened to, and that their points were raised before the decision-making body, that's a win. Because you don't always win. Somebody's going to lose on the field of play. So you don't always win, but if you feel like you were listened to and paid attention to, that's a win with the community. So our recommendation is to you, and then you decide and deliberate, and you make a recommendation to the city council on those items that go there. So what we do is, we prepare a staff report that summarizes what happens at this meeting, usually, the number of people that spoke, what the main topics were, and then ultimately, decision of the commission. That gets stapled, or now, it's just appended to the PDF, but that gets stapled to the staff report, and all of that is sent to the city council. Staff then explains what happened at the commission meeting, and sits down. The council has, has access to our staff report, has access to all of the decision-making that you have done, and isn't obligated to follow either of them. They have the ability to make a decision based on the recommendations of the staff and of the commission. That is within their purview to do so. I would note, though, that if you get to a point where the commission decisions are being overturned on a regular basis at the council level, it's probably time to sit down with the council and find out what the disconnect is. Usually, items that come before the commission, you know, an appeal to the council, should probably go through without much difficulty. It's not rubber stamping, it's just that as we act together as a commission and a council, your staff can provide better information to the applicants, so the applications are getting closer and closer to the ideal for what you're expecting. So you're not having to make those corrections at the meeting. I almost declared a slide in there about, about how that works. There really is an iterative process. There are times during your year when it's appropriate to question large policies. You have an annual general plan review that has to be done now and returned into the state. Great opportunity to look at your general plan without a project in front of you. The worst time to start questioning large policy decisions is when you have an applicant in front of you. Because the applicant may have spent a couple of years to stand here in front of you, and now you're going to say that all of the policies along the way, and all of the decisions along the way, are no longer valid because we want to go a different direction. That's just really rough on the applicant, certainly within your rights as a commission, but it's really rough. There is this juggernaut of, of momentum for applications as they come through. So if you're going to make policy changes to the general plan, which is the best place to do them, or to the zoning, which is the second-best place to do them, it's best to have those discussions as workshops, joint meetings, reviews, talk with the staff, get on the agenda, without an applicant in front of you. That way, they're not the ones bearing the brunt of our change of direction. And I can inform the applicants that come in, "Hey, the commission's concerned about this policy. There aren't enough trash cans in front of candy stores." And they're looking to change that. Well, I can decide at that point whether to wait until you're done, or whether to add trash cans in front of the candy stores and hope to appease the, the commission. But at least they come informed, and it doesn't, isn't a late hit. So some final thoughts on some of the information. Law use laws change frequently. We just had a number of them signed by the governor that's going to make housing interesting discussion in the next year for everybody, including the city of Eastville. Courts show deference to those cities that show their work. And you'll hear that phrase, "Show your work." It's what shows up in our findings, it's what all of the evidence that we provide to you. That's the point of your staff reports being so thick, is to be able to demonstrate to the court later on, "This is why we made this decision." Shortcuts aren't, but you're all old enough to know that. SEQA is not the project. Please, if you take nothing from me rambling on this evening, don't plan your city using the environmental document. Do not do that. Every community and project is different. I really implore you to talk to your colleagues in other cities to see how they do things. Your staff can, can help you with that. There are ways to avail yourself of, of, like the League of California Cities and other types of organizations to help you network. I've seen some of you at those meetings, and it's interesting to find out how other communities do things. Every microphone is on. Just, I thought I'd throw that in there. This is one of my favorites. There is no big book of planning. We don't go back into the back room and crack open this book that's six feet thick and say, "Okay, here's Larry's question on page 975, paragraph 3." Sometimes, we don't know the answer, but it's our job to help find it and figure it out and bring it back to you. And of course, the very favorite, when in doubt, give your staff a call before the meeting. So if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them. That's the end of my, my overview of planning. And some of you have been to my SEQA sessions before and know that I can go on forever and ever, so be quiet.
Commissioners, any questions?
Very thorough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on. Very informative. Item seven, public hearing, men, so let's go down to eight. Commissioner Business, Commissioner Business, item 8.1.
Yes, Chair, members of the commission. I'll turn the mic over to Mr. William Hensley.
Thank you, Gina. Thank you, Chair. Commissioner, this item is regarding the Hamner Place Vacations and Dedications. As you know, Sliceman Interchange was removed from the general plan, and as a result, the right-of-way that was part of what would have been a six-lane roadway is no longer needed. And the Sliceman Road is now a local road with a roundabout. So as a result, we're asking you to find, make a determination of general plan consistency to vacate that old right-of-way, and then the new right-of-way that's more consistent with the new layout, that's consistent with the local road, will be taken to council for acceptance of the new right-of-way. Also, as the site was being prepared, there was a restriction for a driveway. We wanted to move that, that restriction, so that there could be a new driveway that's more consistent with the plan that is being provided at this time. So we're requesting that the planning commission find that the vacation, the current access restriction, is acceptable, or inconsistent, sorry, with the general plan.
Where was the restriction on the?
I'll show you. I have it exhibited here. So this is the, what we're asking to be vacated for Sliceman Road, and this is the exhibit showing the new dedication for the more local road. And this, this shows the restricted access vacation. So that's where, we'd like you to vacate in that location, so that can be where the driveway takes access from at this time.
Okay, go back to the, the first one. Go back up again.
This one?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I've had that too. I can't get that back, but I touched the wrong button. Okay. No, I should. So go ahead, you can go back down. You could scroll back up.
So this is going to be the new dedication for the new right-of-way.
Okay.
And then this, this shows the, what we're asking to be vacated to allow a driveway to be there, because what, what's happened is, this is restricting access off of Hamner Way, or Hamner Avenue, so that you, you don't have multiple driveways
Okay.
Impeding the, the flow of traffic. So we only want one, and we want it to be in this location now, so we're.
So at this time, we're just allowing a driveway, and we're not deciding a left turn, right turn, just right in, right out, or?
It'll be right in, right out.
Right out.
Yeah, there'll be a median there.
Okay.
Along Hamner Avenue. Yeah. And then we're just going to restrict access where it used to be. The driveway there.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, keep, continue with your presentation.
That pretty much concludes the presentation. So Lewis is here, that is available to answer any questions. Also, Webb is here, if you guys have questions that they may be willing to, or able to answer if you like.
Do the applicants want to speak right now, or?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Rick Manners with Lewis Retail Centers. Larry's just here to answer questions. This is, all of this, I'll call it remapping. It was really just a cleanup from the general plan amendment that was adopted back in June. So it's more civil engineering, if you will. If you have questions, happy to answer them.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So what do you need? We need a recommendation, or a, we need a motion?
We need a motion from the, from the commission making a determination of consistency with the general plan, of that the vacation of the current Lot B configuration and reconveyance of current Lot B to Lewis, and the vacation of the current access restriction for Lot A slash Hamner Avenue is consistent with the general plan.
So if there's no questions, do we have a recommendation on the, do we have a motion to approve the recommendation as staff?
Make a motion, approve, or recommend.
Do we have a second?
A second.
No discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Trelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holby?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary?
Aye.
Charlie Bia?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Item 8.2, Limonite Gap Closure Project, report.
This item will also be presented by William Hensley.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners.
Well, we'll explain that.
This, this item is related to the Limonite Gap Closure Project, which is part of the city's CIP. There's a current funding available in the amount of $3.7 million, and with that money, we are proceeding with the design. City Council awarded a contract to Mark Thomas on May 22nd, and they, they are here to provide a presentation tonight. We have Darren Johnson and Josh Casper, who will be presenting to you tonight. We've been working with Mark Thomas for the last four or five months, and we're at the point now where we're looking for input. We've also been working with the developers in the area who are here as well, so if you have any comments from them. But we're looking for input from you to present to city council. We're likely going to take this also to council at the next council meeting, so we'd like to provide your, your input on this project to them. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Thomas. Come on up. Here's the pointer. Thanks.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name's Darren Johnson. I'm a division manager with Mark Thomas, and I have Josh Casper with me. He's one of our senior project engineers, or project managers. So we're going to just give a little bit of overview of the project, where it's at, kind of where we're going, and, you know, look for maybe some questions or feedback from the commission. A general overview of the project, you can see here that this project is to close the gap in Limonite between Elm and Abbot, over on the far left of the screen, the west, over at Elm, and then Archibald on the far right of the screen, the east side of the project. Right now, we're not. Right now, Limonite was constructed on the bottom left of the screen as a part of the ranch development when that was built. And that part of Hellman was constructed. So the project that we're looking at basically goes from the eastern end of the ranch property over the channel over to Archibald. The general plan indicates that Limonite should be a four-lane or a six-lane road. And so after we did some traffic studies here, we identified what the forecast volumes would be in future years. We identified that a four-lane road through this section is adequate to handle all of the traffic. So the project that we're showing proposes a four-lane road over the channel and between Archibald and Hellman, like I said. So if you start to zoom in a little bit, and there's two pieces. One is where we go over the channel. So here you can see that Limonite goes over the channel, and as Bill had mentioned, it's far available from Denver, Chicago, Western Riverside Council of Governments, but it isn't enough to cover the whole thing. So we're going to look at ways to be able to minimize the cost of the project, reduce some of the bridge widths and whatnot. And one of the things that we did is you can see that Limonite crosses that channel at a very large angle or skiers, it's called, and that angle really increases the life of the bridge, which in turn increases the cost of the bridge. So we looked at ways to reduce that skew as much as we possibly could and be able to try to bring the bridge in, you know, in a better cost. And we're now in about the eight to ten million dollar range. This is an example of what the bridge could look like. They'll get a three-span bridge very similar to this. It'll have the pier walls in the bottom of the channel similar to this. The top, the railing and everything of that is still, we're working on all the aesthetics, and we'll come back to the commission to get some more feedback on what the aesthetics look like on the top of the bridge. And as you go from the bridge, which is on the bottom left just off the screener, and Limonite then goes through the homestead potential, or the proposed homestead development over to Archibald. And again, a four-lane road going through there, there's going to be a linear intersection, a narrow section that would be feeding the development there. And one of the things that has come up is with that intersection, there's only two forms of traffic control we can introduce there. One is a traffic signal very similar to the traffic signals that I'm sure all of you drove through and know here tonight. A type of traffic control in an intersection like that is a roundabout. And this is an application where a roundabout would potentially be a good application, a good form of traffic control for a number of reasons. And I'll have Josh get up and talk a little bit more about the roundabouts. But again, we wanted to just get your thoughts, your comments, your feedback on the potential of a roundabout there versus a traffic signal. So Josh?
So the goal of a roundabout is to have traffic that's approaching it, have enough time to slow their speeds so they can see the incoming traffic, merge safely, travel through and exit at a lower speed. And so higher-speed facilities like Limonite, the best way to achieve that is to actually pull the traffic away and into an S-shaped curve that brings them back into the roundabout effectively. And each of those curves doing this will get smaller and smaller. And so what happens is the driver, as they're entering this kind of a movement, they have enough time to actually see the roundabout, their brain registers, I've got to actually slow down. And these curves help with that slowdown in a safe manner that they can merge safely on. Some of the movements that we would talk about, exterior lanes on the outer lanes, as they're approaching, the drivers can either make a right, as you see up in the screener, or they can travel through the intersection. Outer lanes, very similar, but exact opposite. They can either travel through the roundabout like you see, or they could make left turn movement as you see there. And when you step back at a hundred thousand foot level, it's no different than a traffic signal would be. The right lane's going to go through or right, the left lane's going to go through or left. Additionally, your side streets, they have the ability to go through, or similar to the previous movements, they can make a right or a left through it. So they get full access as well. Bicycles and pedestrians, these are very bike-friendly and very pedestrian-friendly. So bikers that are inside the roadway in a bike lane, as they're approaching, there's going to be a bike exit, basically, that they're directed through, that would put them on a facility that they can either drive their bike or ride their bike through to crosswalks and exit on the other side, back onto the roadway. Or some of the faster bikers that want to continue at a higher speed, they can enter the roundabout, much like a regular vehicle can, and travel right or through. Pedestrian, or also bikers can also stay on when the bike lanes are actually outside of the roadway. Pedestrians, they have the ability to access their sidewalks via crosswalks like you see out there, too. And now our trucks are going to be, semi-truck and trailers are going to be very anticipated. And so what you're going to see is a diagram of how each of the truck movements can be made. But ideally, what you want to focus on is that these trucks stay off inside their lane movements. There isn't, the lanes are designed wide enough that they have, and the radii are big enough that the trucks can all stay in, including the truck trailers themselves. But that interior big circle, that's called a truck apron, and it's designed high enough such that it will prevent drivers from being able to drive over it and guide them through the roundabout, but allow the truck trailer itself to sway over, but, you know, be sure enough that that truck height can sway over so that way we're not having a huge roundabout. And so as you can see, there's the movement. Hopefully, they're not making it all at the same time like you see. But that lane making a big round that you see right here, too, you can see that truck trailer moving over that interior circle, truck apron.
Can we do that one more time, please?
Yeah. This is my favorite part of the presentation, too.
So there's enough room for two trucks to go side by side like that without?
Yep. And the goal is, you can see that the lanes off to the, as you're approaching, that big S-shaped curve, they're kind of narrower. And as you come in and the curves start to become wider, they get, the lane widths get bigger effectively. And that allows that trailer to stay inside the travel. There's no overlap outside of the lanes. And then the trucks that are making left turns, that trailer will basically drag over that truck apron. Why not? Let's do it a third time.
So it looks like when that truck makes that turn around that circle, it ends up being in the outside lane then, right?
So the inside.
Go ahead.
Yeah, let's try it again. Watch the inner lanes. So as it makes this one that's coming into the roundabout now, it stays completely inside of the inner lanes, and then it's directed to the the side street.
I see. Okay. So it either stay inside in a complete circle, or it could go to the outside lane and make the left turn into the?
Yeah. Yeah. So basically, similar to that first slide we showed, if you're in the outside lane, you'll go through or right. If you're inside, you'll go through or left. And same kind of movement, basically, when you're coming off the side streets, you can go right or through or left.
Okay.
One more time?
No, I'm good.
So then, you know, the roundabouts are a perfect opportunity to do something landmarky or beautiful. So this is an example in Rockland Street of a dual-lane roundabout. You can see they put, you know, entering Rockland and had some nice landscaping with rock and drought-tolerant plants and bark. Also, you can see the truck apron. It's that gray stamped concrete around the side of it. And here's one out in Avenue Fifty and Jefferson Street in La Quinta, where although it's a single roundabout, it was designed big enough to where they put a big, you know, La Quinta Road Runner statue out there. It's got the desert landscaping. This is another good shot of that truck apron we were talking about. It's got a nice hardscape to it. Here's a couple more. This one's in Roseville, and it's got a nice sleek look to it. You get a better look of how the striping works in it as well. But great view of the truck apron, what you can do with the landscaping. And then in some cases, you don't want landscaping. It was just complete hardscape in the Woodbridge Street one.
If I may interrupt you for a minute?
Absolutely.
I keep imagining the roundabout in front of Home Depot when I, when I think about this roundabout. What, what size would the one that you're proposing, can you have a picture of the size?
We'll go back a couple.
One of these?
So this one, I'll just use this one because it's clean enough.
So I mean, one of the pictures that you just showed us of different, a different roundabouts.
This one in Rockland here, the outermost lane circles, basically. So the outer lane diameter is about a hundred and eighty feet or so, which is, I, you know, the one in Home Depot, I think, is probably about forty foot or fifty.
Pretty small, yeah.
Yeah. So this was probably about, I'd say that inner landscaping circle's about the size of the one in Home Depot.
Okay. Yeah.
But that is about the rough size. And the nice one, if you actually Google Earth, this is in a very similar area type where there's light industrial and church and residential, and it's a dual-lane roundabout. And they actually have a dual-lane roundabout about, I don't know, a thousand feet from this one as well. Works really, it's a wonderful design, but very similar approach to what we would have to incorporate if this was a project.
Thank you.
So with that said, I'll turn it back to Darren.
So then we just wanted to, you know, finish up with the next steps. We want to be able to incorporate any direction or comments or suggestions that you may have tonight. We want to be able to come back to you in the next month or two and be able to present, you know, where we are with the potential roundabout. We want to then finalize any preliminary improvement plans, develop the bridge and landscape aesthetics pad, be able to present that to you, and then continue working with the developers. And we want to be able to keep them moving as their project is moving along very quickly. And then, of course, we will finish up with all the planned specs and estimates for the project and any of the SECA documentation that needs to be done. So with that, if Bill or Gina had anything more, or if you have any questions, comments?
Time now for Commissioner input on this project?
Sure. We also have the developer here if you want to ask them any questions, which would be using this roundabout.
Okay.
Ray and Grant Ross.
Commissioner Hobie, do you have any opinion on this?
I have a couple of questions. So from Limonite coming from Eastville, so from Archibald, Limonite is a, is a six-lane?
Yes.
Road. So we're taking it down to a four-lane road, and that's because Hellman on the Chino side is also a four-lane road. So we're, we're taking it down because of that.
Partially because of that, because of the other end, like you said, in Chino, it's four-lane, but also because the, the traffic between Archibald and Hellman doesn't warrant six lanes. There's no need to build six lanes.
Well, I'm more of the opinion that we should because Ontario Ranch is coming in. A lot of us do drive from Eastville to Chino. I'm one of them. I would drive this. This would be my, this would be my road to get into Chino. And now that the Pine, I guess, off-ramp has been approved off the seventy-one, I mean, that's going to bring more traffic off that area coming into our area. So I'm just looking for, I don't want to, I don't want to underbuild, I guess.
Absolutely.
But if the roads are ready on Hellman are only four lanes, then I can see, I just didn't want any unnecessary backup on our side. Is there a sidewalk on the bridge?
Yes.
Okay. And the thought process for a roundabout versus a traffic signal, is that a cost issue?
There's a number of issues. Not that cost is part of it. Safety is a big thing, but roundabouts that are proven to be much safer than a civilized intersection. They're the most effective form of traffic calming that there is. It's the best way to slow traffic down, the safest way to slow traffic down. It provides, it will help, you know, keep cars from going too fast through that area. You constantly move through a roundabout. How many times have you been sitting around in a car and nobody's, you're just sitting there waiting? You'll never just sit at a roundabout if you're the only car that are constantly moving through them. They're better from an initial standpoint because you don't have cars idling at a red light. So there's a lot of benefits like that that come with a roundabout versus a traffic signal.
I do agree with you. I have been in other parts of the world that use them. And I do agree with you on that, however. I have been at the one at Eastville Gateway, and that is a nightmare. And there are people constantly going through it.
Yes.
Which then brings me to my next question about the center. If we do go with the roundabout, that center, I think, needs to be something very prominent so that people see it and don't go straight through it like they're doing at Eastville Gateway.
Absolutely. And so, not to knock any other designs, but, you know, the, the Eastville Gateway, it's not a roundabout, to be honest. It's officially, it's a traffic circle. And a lot of people see something like that and, as an example, they're like, oh, my gosh, that's what we're going to get? No. Roundabouts, if they're done right, they work right in the right location. They don't work everywhere, but they have to be done right. And they need to be big enough to be able to accommodate the trucks and accommodate all the vehicles. But they can't be too big because they might take too much right away. So it's all balance. It's much more of an art from a design standpoint than it is a science. Engineers are like scientists, but this, it kind of works the other side of our brain. And if they're done right, they really can work well. But yeah, it would not be like the, the small one that you're talking about. It would definitely be big enough. And the other thing you mentioned was having something in the center permanent that's critical with a roundabout because, as Josh was saying, part of what makes a roundabout work is you're driving down the road, and we all just kind of drive, right? How many times have you gotten to work and you're like, gee, listen, I don't even remember driving here? But when our brain all of a sudden sees something on the other road, it's like, look, what's going on? And, you know, whether it's that S-curve as you're approaching it, whether it's the landscaping or some kind of ornamentation in the center, your brain sees that and automatically realizes, I need to start slowing down, I need to start paying attention, I need to focus on what's coming up here because this isn't just typical straight road. And so you see that. If you're on it, you really don't want to do is you don't want, you know, like a big statue. Something that somebody's going to have to walk across there and go see, something with a plaque or whatever. It can't be that kind of a monument because you don't want anybody to walk into the middle of the roundabout because there's no safe access across it. But you do need something there that people are going to see. Yes, absolutely.
Nothing, nothing else.
Commissioner Houston?
I really don't have anything to add. You said anything positive about roundabouts that I would have. I'm a big proponent of them for traffic calming, emissions, everything else. So there's nothing to add.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnston?
Commissioner Hobie stole all my thunder, but I guess my question would be, is what is the difference in the pricing of the roundabout versus a stoplight? Because not that I don't believe in it, and I think safety is number one in our community, but we don't have any roundabouts. So I don't think we need to reinvent what we're already doing. We have very few traffic problems. We have very, we have accidents, but it's mostly cars with bicycles. We don't have any real radical accidents with car on car. So I would be curious, what's the difference in the money?
So I'll let our colleague from Marte come up, and then I'd also like to give the applicant, not the applicant in this case, but one of the property owners, where this roundabout would be right in the middle of their project, to come up and also share some information that they would like to do as well. Okay? So how about you start, and then Mr. Popperini and Mr. Grant Ross?
Yeah. So from a cost standpoint, roundabouts will typically be a little less than a three hundred thousand dollar signal. The other thing that you, that are cost savings with a roundabout is you have a little landscape. landscape maintenance costs, but you don't have ongoing electrical costs and maintenance costs that you have with a traffic signal. So, traffic signals are cheap to continue to keep running because of the electric that it takes to run it, so it's um, those are cost savings, you know, from a safety standpoint, like you mentioned, there may not be that many accidents in the city of Eastvale, which is great. The big difference from a safety standpoint is when there is an accident at a traffic signal at an intersection, it, it's a lot of times not good because a T-bone is the worst kind of accident you want to be in, a lot of times you don't survive those. Now, the worst accident that's going to happen in a roundabout is a slow speed side swipe, a slow speed rear ender, you know, twenty, twenty-five miles an hour, i- i- it's, it's a lot of times much more moderate from a, a collision standpoint versus a T-bone at a, an intersection. So, cost wise, they're a little bit cheaper, not, you know, way cheaper, but they're a little cheaper, but they are far safer.
Okay, good point, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Paul Marini?
Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Um, the term that's come is traffic calming and six lanes going through uh, what is the DIT area, which we will be bringing to you as the homestead uh, in the weeks and months ahead. At a fifty-five million hour design speed, there will be trucks seeking to turn left and turn right and the benefit that as the developer we see as one of functionality, the traffic calming um, benefits of the roundabout certainly favor a safe ingress and egress for the trucks that will be going there. And the scope and scale of the homestead is comparable to the campus, which was approved by Commission, I want to say four years ago or so. Then there, there's a, the trucks are off Archibald, into the site and all of the activity happens there, the site is different because uh, if there were six lanes, it's going to be four lanes, I don't believe, I don't say it well, I, it, the cost of going from four to six lanes on the bridge will be staggering, I don't have numbers to quote, but I, I'm certain Mark Thomas does, so I suspect that part would stand, so going from six lanes to four lanes with the roundabout will benefit by slowing anything down as it comes up for the reasons that have been identified, just the visual cues that will be taking place. That's going to improve safety, it's going to improve functionality and then there are the issues of visibility, uh, uh, um, many, it will be a main entry into the city, not kind of a handful, but nonetheless, a, a significant entry into the city and this will be, and it's an opportunity for there to be some attractive landscape, hardscape element that would be different and it'll slow everything down. Coming across that ridge unfair with a fifty-five million hour designing speed, where there will be trucking through the, through the ranch, through Transwestern property and ours, tends not to still slow people down and this element would, and it will improve the functionality of the development at, uh, within the DIT area at the, at the homestead and allow a few access points because the car, cars and, or, you know, the vehicles coming in there will be slowed down and that will facilitate some additional movements of getting cars and trucks off the roadway into that project, which is of a, of a scale comparable, as I said, to the, to the campus. So, as a developer, we're in favor of it and I'll tell you that my current roundabouts have not been my life, I have not, you know, been a huge advocate of them, I have never been in an area where they have made sense and in this case, looking at it as we have, the entire team at Orbis, with our developer, our, our design teams, um, we've concluded, contrast kind of our initial take on it was that this is a benefit to the project and that it will slow everything down and allow the, the proper movement of vehicles and trucks in an area where it wants to slow, coming up to a lot going on in Eastvale, residences, retail, that, and it will slow that down as it transitions out of Chino and into, to your city. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Um, I have a couple of questions for whoever it might apply to. Um, signaling, is there going to be any kind of signal, warning of a, of a roundabout coming up or signage or?
Signage, yes, typically there will be signage, you know, it'll show the circle that gives those, that a roundabout is ahead, but again, the, the whole idea is by putting that S curve in, it just makes it, I don't want to say jump out at you, but it makes it very obvious.
Okay, with that said?
Yeah.
There's crosswalks across the?
Yes.
How are there people going to cross if there's no stopping them?
Well, so again, the beauty of a roundabout for the pedestrians that are crossing, um, in fact, let me just, was uh, I'll try to, I'll go back to, there we go, that one, so there's one, you can see that there's crosswalks that go across the uh, two lanes of traffic. So, one of the beauties of it is even when you're crossing a four lane roadway, you're only having to go across two lanes at a time.
But there's nothing there to stop cars?
Correct.
The vehicles?
But the, the, so you can, so you only have one direction, two left, because that's the one direction the cars are coming from and if there's a constant stream, then i- i- which there typically isn't because there's going to be left turns and then as the cars are slowing down, pedestrians then have a way when they're in the crosswalk, so.
Yeah, that's true, but.
Part of the idea is that's why the crosswalks are pulled back at least a car length and why the, the speeds as Josh was talking about, you got these S curves, you slow everybody down to around twenty miles an hour, um, I, I consider, I personally have walked a number of roundabouts and that was one of my first concerns, but before I, I, you know, started designing with roundabouts, I was like, how does this work for pedestrians? And again, you're standing there at a crosswalk, cars have slowed way down, they're, as you, they see you and then we've got to make sure that they've got the sight distance to be able to see the pedestrians, they see the pedestrian and as you start to walk out, they've got time to slow down, stop at the crosswalk, you cross and again, you're only crossing twenty-four, twenty-five feet of pavement, you get to the median and then you do it again on the other side. Another location, just to kind of tack on to that, um, they found that roundabouts at schools is like the right location because of all the kids, all the pets, i- the pedestrians, it, it's a great place because the cars are driving much, much slower.
Um, okay, but that being said, in Eastvale here, they don't even stop for pedestrians at stop signs, so how are you going to stop for pedestrians at a roundabout? I, I just, unless there's some kind of yellow flashing light or something that grabs the attention of, because that's going to be a busy?
Yeah.
Uh, arterial there going through that, that's going to be busy, because that's going to be a shortcut coming into Eastvale.
Right.
And there's going to be a lot of traffic using that, I don't know what kind of study you've done and how, what they're saying, but I know it's going to be busy.
Right.
And so, that's going to be crowded with cars and there's not going to be a little pause for people to cross, so I can't see a vehicle stopping for pedestrian, I just, I, you know, unless there's some kind of flashing yellow light or, you know, you can light up those, the crosswalk with yellow light, blinking lights or something that shows that there's a pedestrian there, you need to stop.
Right.
You need to pay attention to this pedestrian.
Right, now, those are some great points and, and also that's one of the things we're looking for is that kind of feedback, we'll definitely take that, look at it in more detail on exactly how we would light it, simulate it, you know.
It's not the red light, but something that?
The impalement.
Pay attention of the, of the vehicles.
Yep, great point.
It, it is a good point, sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Uh, Chair, but you know, most people are used to pushing the button at the stop sign and walking across.
Right.
This won't have that ability.
Right.
Unless we put something there that where they can push a button and then, in a few minutes or something, that light will start blinking and?
Yep.
Then you proceed at your own risk.
Yeah, no, that's a great point though, very good point.
Okay, uh, I think that's all I had to say about this. Any other comments or anything that you want to say? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I think you have enough from us, do you?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, then let's go on to item eight point three, Senate Bill Two, grant funding update.
Chair and members of the Planning Commission, good evening to you officially and uh, thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation. So, uh, in a nutshell, SB two is funding uh, that is available to the city in a non-competitive basis. Uh, recently, actually in twenty seventeen, Governor Brown signed SB two into law and it's officially called, it's referred to as SB two, but officially the name is the Building Homes and Jobs Act. And it's aimed at addressing California's housing shortage, I'm sure that uh, most of the people in the audience and you as uh, Commissioners and Chair are aware, uh, that we do have a housing shortage and, and the Governor has uh, taken up champion the cause. So, in March of this year, uh, the, the California Department of Housing and Community Development issued what they call a notice of funding availability, that means it's time to apply for the funds. Again, like I said, the funds are non-competitive, uh, so all we need do to receive said funds is file the application and then have an, a resolution that's approved by the City Council. But prior to going to the City Council, we wanted to get, take this opportunity to give you the update uh, about SB two and about the availability of the funds, three hundred and ten thousand dollars would be what uh, Eastvale is eligible for based upon population and uh, we have some use for those, we are going to be entering into a general plan opportunity, we have some software needs, we have some updates of our zoning code, there, there are things and we actually um, at Commissioner Lee's and uh, I believe uh, Commissioner Laney's request and, and agreed to by everyone at the DIAS had asked for some information on possible uses for those funds and so we have that for you later this evening. Um, but to summarize here, this is an opportunity for money that we can utilize in our planning processes and so we wanted to make that opportunity uh, available to you to make any comments and then uh, let you know that we will be presenting this to the City Council at the next meeting.
Thank you, are there any comments from the Commission?
Yeah, I just uh, wanted to also bring up uh, AB one-on-one this year, um, are, are you familiar with AB one-on-one, the Housing Budget Trailer Bill that provides additional funding? Okay.
Yes, I am sorry about the mic was not on, yes.
So, did you need anything from the Commission, um?
At this point, the, this is a receive and file, um, however, will be, at the DIAS, you do have a, a list of some possible ideas for utilizing the funds, uh, should we be successful in getting them, so, we can talk about that.
Thank you.
I do have one question.
Sure.
So, I guess when we look at, you know, what, I guess bills that are coming in front of us and we talk about, you know, supportive income housing of some kind, you know, as far as when we look at our general plan, every time we meet and talk about homes, we're running out of property. So, if they were to hit us and say, hey, you need to put in three thousand homes, you know, or of, or three thousand units of affordable housing, how are we planning for that? I mean, are, are we actually looking at the property we have left? Because I've seen a lot of maps where it's dwindling fast.
Yeah, yes, the amount of property in Eastvale, uh, actually, that's one of the uses we could use, the SB two funds is to perform a vacant and underdeveloped land survey, uh, so not so much for the vacant parcels, that's very obvious which ones are vacant, uh, but some that might be underutilized, uh, that could be converted, but uh, but to answer your question, uh, we, even the ones that are vacant, there is uh, plans to utilize them for some housing as well and, and commercial. Um, and I would also say that fortunately, I believe you're referring to the range of numbers, uh, those have gone down, it was a range of from three thousand to thirty-seven hundred, uh, but uh, you know, we submitted a letter uh, on behalf of the City of Eastvale and uh, SCAG did report back that the number is, is uh, dwindled down to the two thousand dollar, two thousand uh, unit range, which is much better. Uh, so we are looking at ways that we can do, but basically what it boils down to is zoning for those types of housing units as opposed to actually converting, you do have to make provision to be able to accommodate and that's what we're shooting to do.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. So, um, we've received it and you can file it. All right, thank you. So, with that uh, said or that concluded, then we just go on to item nine, um, City Staff Report, item nine point one, Legislative Update.
Mayday, Mayday Chair and Commissioner, um, before you, uh, you do have a legislative update which was prepared by the City Attorney's Office in hard copy, I believe it was also um, electronically mailed to you uh, this afternoon. Uh, I'm not going to go into detail or go through each of these uh, individually, there's twenty-one new bills uh, that have been recently signed by the Governor, uh, that deal with housing and housing related, related issues, many of these deal with accessory dwelling units, um, streamlining of um, the development of housing and how?
Yes.
Yes, uh, and how the cities are going to approve new housing developments, um, tenant protections, uh, things like that. Many of these bills were signed uh, as late as uh, this past Friday, so City Attorney's Office and City Attorneys throughout the state are still kind of analyzing these bills to determine how they're going to impact their cities, including our offices, how they're going to impact uh, Eastvale. Um, so we're going through that process, going to be determining what uh, potential ordinance updates we may need to do, particularly to our AUD, uh, accessory dwelling unit ordinance and other thing, other things, uh, how they might affect our general plan, things like that. Um, if you have any questions on any particular bill that we've prepared a summary for, please feel free to contact our office or City Staff and we can provide additional information on that, um, otherwise, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions by the Commission?
Governor was busy.
Very busy.
Okay, let's go on to item uh, nine point two, Senate Bill Two, SB two.
So, Chairman, Members of the Commission, um, earlier we had a general appointment, you know, that we were going to submit Eastvale's application for funding for SB two and uh, at the previous meeting, we had a request to come, to come before you with some of the options that we could utilize the funding for in order to meet the SB two. So, I took the liberty of putting together a matrix because I like matrices and uh, makes it easy to follow, uh, so at the DIAS, each of you has a, a copy of what some potential SB two funding projects would be. Yeah, at the top, we talk about what the essential nature of the bill is and it's, it's to accelerate housing production, also streamline the approval of housing, facilitate housing affordability, promote development consistent with state planning priorities that has to do uh, per government code and then uh, geographic equity and, and equity is a, is a rising term in the, in the world and field of planning, you'll hear about that in our uh, General Plan Update as well. So, on, on the left would be lists of eligible project types and then those that are an Eastvale application on the right. And so, in reading through the list, you'll see that we have several opportunities um, to be able to utilize uh, the monies, uh, one we've already spoken of before, our general plan, the zoning ordinance, um, we have an, a land management system, the funds can be utilized for that as well. Uh, the, the farming, um, any modifications to the Leola Ranch Comprehensive Plan, those are opportunities that could be utilized for SB two funding. Uh, I mentioned a vacant and underdeveloped land survey, uh, to identify uh, housing opportunities, uh, also?
Excuse me?
Increasing and or identifying sites that would be good for veteran and or senior housing opportunity or any other type of, of population, special needs populations, um, developing uh, site and design plans that are already adopted and the benefit of that would be, it's already been approved by our uh, Planning Commission and also by our City Council and if a developer were to come and to adopt those design plans and then in exchange, they would receive a uh, review process that could be um, administrative as opposed to uh, coming through for public hearing. So, those are some of the ways that you could do on the, on, on the flip side, uh, on the back, uh, where you've identified a couple of other uh, measures that can be used, again, on the left side is things that are specified in the actual law and on the right would be the application of that particular Eastvale. Uh, and even things as far as um, deferring development impact fees to facility housing, so say you don't want to pay your development impact fees at a building permit issue and she might want to be able to defer them to a later date for housing, so those are all ways in which uh, we could utilize SB two funding. If you have any particular questions, we'd be, you know, happy to answer that, um, but we will make that application, um, hopefully be successful and receive those funds and then uh, be coming to you with ideas from this list as to, this is what we think we should be using from and then also taking input from you as well. All right?
Thank you.
Sure.
Do I have any questions?
Uh I do, I do as a matter of fact. So on on this, uh I mean, this is great what you did here for eligibility projects.
Thank you.
Three hundred and ten thousand doesn't go very far when you start doing engineering. So for budgetary purposes, I mean, are, you know, do we have a way, we're gonna prioritize and figure out which would be the best impact for us, in other words.
Absolutely.
But this just lets everybody know, because this is a great sheet, just kinda lets you know what would be eligible. Is that that was the point, right?
Yes, I understood that to be from Commissioner Laney and from the rest of the commission that you wanted some ideas, uh but it it the funds are limited to three hundred and ten thousand. Uh so for this go around. Uh but we do have several uh places where we can apply them and yes, we will prioritize.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, that looks like we've done all we can do. Commissioners, any communication? Andrew?
Yeah, just general communication?
Yes.
Um I mentioned before at a previous meeting about Citrus, um road going from Scholar to or probably just Sumner to Harrison. And it basically goes from two lanes to kind of a free fall and then goes to where you either turn left or right. And I think that was probably six months ago and it's still the same way. So it is still where it's two lanes, you go through the light and then it's a free fall. And nobody knows what to do because there's no lanes, there's no lines and people are, you're either crossing in front of each other or somebody's speeding down on the right side of you. And then you get to Harrison and then you have to go either right or left. I think there should just be two lanes and then you decide what you're gonna do when you get to Harrison. I just don't think it's safe. It's certainly not safe around the high school.
Maybe if Public Public Works could take a look at that or something and see what we do.
Absolutely. We'll get back, we'll get back to you and we'll get.
I think I had something else, but I just can't remember.
And Bill, can we, we can report back to them at the next meeting.
Commissioner Laney, do you have any?
Absolutely.
Comments or communication? Commissioner Charleston?
Well, the only thing I have to bring up would be, we're still struggling with seven eleven. There's still graffiti behind it. And it's it's pretty foul graffiti is the problem. So I know that we're working with them, but they're not in a hurry at all and don't seem to really uh react to what we ask them to do. So that graffiti's still there, the light's still out, the other light is twisted. And these are safety lights to go back around that. I believe that access in the back is fire access, but it's it's still a little rough.
I do know uh that our code enforcement team is aware of that and that they have contacted uh the owners of seven eleven and they are working for a resolution. So I will um get some information from Mr. Johnny Turfer, our co- community enhancement safety manager, and report that back as well.
Yeah, because the last time, the last time there was graffiti there, it's been several years, we ended up having to paint it and then charge them back because for six weeks, five weeks, they didn't do it. That's a shame. Thank you.
Okay, well, good job, everybody. Nice meeting. Meeting is now adjourned until November twentieth.